Good evening. I'm Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth area. And I'd like to welcome our candidates and also our audience and our viewers on behalf of our hosts, the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth area. The League of Women Voters is a 103-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are the views of the candidates, not the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as these to provide you, the public, with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum. We ask that campaign buttons or T-shirts not be worn nor signs or literature be distributed in this room. Please silence your electronic devices at this time. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Patty Robes, a Maple Grove resident and a member of the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth area.
Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for the special election seat on the Wayzata School Board. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not answered, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of its forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experiences, their platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order, and the questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's political or public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations of support or opposition to the candidate or their positions, and that candidate be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card available from our volunteers and raise your hand to have it picked up. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. The candidates running for the Wayzata Independent School District 284 School Board Special Election Seat are Jay Hasby, Sheila Pryor, Erin Shelton, Miriam... Okay, help me. Sorry.
Siddiqui.
Siddiqui. I'm sorry. I'll have it. I'll get it right the rest of the time. Miriam Siddiqui. We will begin with Jay Hasby to give one-minute introductory remarks.
Good evening. My name is Jay Hasby, and I'd like to thank... Good evening. My name is Jay Hasby, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. In September 2021, the Wayzata School Board asked me to fill the seat vacated by Cian Falconer until this year's special election. I said yes and was duly appointed late last year. I'm seeking reelection and willing to serve for the remaining term of the vacated seat to provide continuity for my current board colleagues and the district administration as Wayzata Public Schools moves through the COVID era and returns to a greater sense of normalcy. If reelected, I will constantly prioritize Wayzata Public Schools' mission of ensuring a world-class education that prepares each and every student and vision of being a model of excellence in everything we do. I'm willing to serve and willing to lead.
Thank you. Now Sheila Pryor.
My name is Sheila Pryor, and I am asking for your vote. I have three children in the Wayzata district, and I'm a longtime volunteer in the schools and wider community. I'm a volunteer canine handler for our State Search and Rescue Task Force. I have a Bachelor of Science in Biology, and I'm a former neurobiology lab manager. I am also endorsed by Cian Falconer, former board member who was elected to this seat. I'm running because I'm committed to helping all students in the district reach their highest potential. I will be a new voice on the board, providing new ideas for solving some of Wayzata's most persistent problems, like how to close the achievement gap. I have a deep understanding of the concerns and aspirations of Wayzata families. On the board, I can champion the things Wayzata families care about, like improving early reading instruction and school lunch nutrition, environmental sustainability, among other things. Together, we can prepare students to succeed and lead in the multicultural, multiracial society they will inherit someday.
Thank you. Next, Erin Shelton.
My name is Erin Shelton, and I am once again running for Wayzata School Board. I know that the role of the school board is to represent parents and families, as well as taxpayers, to the public school system. Like yours, my chief interest is to protect and educate our kids. I believe classroom time should be used to impart knowledge to this next generation with no other agenda than to help create prepared and intelligent citizens of this country and of the world, and that our financial resources should be used toward that end as well. As a school board member in this shortened term, I will speak up for more board and district transparency and increased access to constructive discussions between board members and those they represent. I will work to keep our schools politically neutral and academically focused. I look forward to my time here tonight and very much appreciate the League of Women Voters for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And now Miriam Siddiqui.
I'm Miriam Siddiqui. First of all, I wanted to thank League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. I am a trained dentist and academician who specializes in head and neck pain, a small business owner, and a wife of a frontline worker who works at VA, serving our veterans. I have been an active member of our community for many years. I believe in constructive participation through engagement and sharing of ideas. I see some shortcomings, and I hope we can all contribute towards growth through inclusivity and diversity, synchronization of school and home learning, mental health and holistic well-being of children, community engagement to service, and last but not the least, climate change.
Thank you. I will now start the questions, and you will be answering in a rotating order. You'll have one minute. And if you need me to repeat the question, just ask. So we're going to start first with candidate Siddiqui. What specific experiences do you bring that prepare you for the role of a Wayzata School Board member, whose duty is to set policy, review budgets, and deal with personal and facility issues?
I represent multiple minorities and hope to bring forward their distant perspective through engagement, service, and creative opportunities for our communal growth. Any positive development of the community starts with meaningful engagement of all its members, hearing the voices which may otherwise be muffled and may offer various and occasionally unique perspectives for our stronger community. As a representative, parents, and community members, our goals are common: a brighter, prosperous, and enlightened future of our children. I'm a working mother who understands and is fully invested in early child developments, needs for special education, and above all, a holistic approach for the development of our next generation. The stagnancy and inaction by virtue of our rigid stance is not an option for the future facing our children.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. What specific experiences do you bring that prepare you for the role of a Wayzata School Board member, whose duty is to set policy, review budgets, and deal with personnel and facility issues?
Thank you. First, as a mom, I have a lot of experience in listening and settling disputes. I think many of us in the room can relate to that. I've lived all over the world, so I know what it's like to be living in a culture that's not my own, and I bring that perspective to the board. I have a scientific background, so I look at things analytically. I don't have a financial background, but I believe that that analytical quality will be helpful in looking at budgets. The basics of economics don't change, just depending on the size of the budget. So I'm quite adept at running a tight ship around my house, and I can bring that along with accountability and fiscal responsibility to this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Thank you. First of all, I have 40-plus years in banking and financial advisory roles. I have deep connections with the district. I'm a longtime resident. I attended Wayzata schools myself. My parents are both Wayzata educators, and all my kids graduated from the high school. I served previously on the Citizens Financial Advisory Council in 2004 to 2007, and then I also served two terms on the Wayzata School Board from 2008 to 2015, including time as Chair, Vice Chair, and Treasurer.
Thank you. Candidate Pryor?
My scientific background equips me with a sense of curiosity and an eagerness to learn in order to solve problems, and it helps me understand evidence-based education policy. My management experience and desire to serve will help me work collaboratively for a larger goal. But most importantly, I am close to what is happening in schools. I have three children currently attending schools in the district. I'm on the board of the Wayzata Education Fund. I was a former Wayzata Legislation Action Committee member. I was a former parent hallway reader at Gleason Lake Elementary. I'm a frequent school chaperone, and I'm a familiar face at school board meetings. With my volunteer work and community ties, I've talked to countless parents, teachers, administrators, and students to learn what truly matters to them and how the district works. It is a school board member's job to interpret the needs of the community, and I am well-suited to that role.
Thank you. We're going to start first with candidate Pryor. What should be the school board's role, if any, in determining school curriculum and what is taught in the classroom?
So curriculum comes from the state. In general, we are required to, you know, meet the benchmarks determined by the state. So the school board has, you know, the role of deciding whether to implement that. They can choose not to, but in general, it's in our best interest to follow the state's lead. Could you repeat the question again?
What should be the school board's role, if any, in determining school curriculum and what is taught in the classroom?
So, yes, the state determines it for the most part, and I trust teachers' professional experience and their judgment to teach the things that the students need to learn.
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Sure. I think, as candidate Pryor indicated, the determination of content and minimum standards is established. I think the board role is to, with the interaction with the administration, assess certain content and certainly keep a pulse on what is in scope and aligned with the mission and vision of the district.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So I feel while we know that the curriculum is coming from state, there should be local participation also. We need to pay special attention to visual learning, auditory, and, you know, using all the five senses. We need to include academicians, clinical researchers, you know, educators on various committees who can add more, you know, feathers to this curriculum and make it more colorful for, you know, age appropriately.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton?
According to Minnesota State Statute 123B.09/8, the board must superintend and manage the schools of the district, adopt rules for their organization, government, and instruction, keep registers, and prescribe textbooks and courses of study. Now, I know that we have standards that we must comply to, but according to the state statute, it does fall into the wheelhouse of school boards to make these final approvals. I know that our board currently chooses to delegate this to a committee represented by teachers, administrators, staff, community members, and parents. As a school board member, I'd like to take a more active role in that, but surely to interact with the public to find out the values that I'm to represent here and to make sure we see those values represented in our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Not sure what that sound is, but it stopped. All right. Hello? We're going to proceed. We're going to start with candidate Shelton. What is your position on books being pulled from the school library shelves?
Thank you. Well, I think if it's looked at as a question of censorship, I believe parents do have a right to help to choose and to navigate what we find in our school libraries. For instance, in a business school library, you'll see certain books that are different than you would find in a nursing school library based on the objectives that you have for the education. So I believe that some of the books in our libraries currently and some that have been removed, I think, would maybe bring into question what objectives we have for our education, because some of these books have been quite troubling and should be removed. Anything with explicit sexual content does absolutely not belong in our public school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So I feel like we need to have age-appropriate materials and, you know, nourishing materials. We need to surround kids with positive stuff that can elevate them. I mean, there are kind of people around us that elevate us in life, and then there are kind of people that pull us down. So, you know, it's all about, we are what we eat, so whatever we are going to feed our kids, they are going to turn out. So we need to, like she said, you know, eliminate sexual content, drugs, fighting stuff, and, you know, those kind of things should be out of reach for kids.
Thank you. Candidate Pryor. What is your position on books being pulled from the school library shelves?
I'm generally against pulling books from the library shelves. I trust our librarians to provide age-appropriate books. Scrubbing all the complications of life from books just makes books boring and unrealistic, and kids are just going to learn about stuff elsewhere. I would rather students learn about difficult topics in the context of a book that was intentionally crafted by an author and chosen by library professionals. Books, especially those about difficult topics, can provide lessons, explore consequences, and possibly help students navigate tough situations. We should err on the side of keeping books so as not to silence the perspectives of historically marginalized people. I support our LGBTQ community as well, and their interests should be taken into account, and we should have books on the shelf that are about their lived experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Yeah, thank you. I think there are protocols in place and policy parameters that guide the content. I think what is vitally important is that parents have tools in place. If for some reason there's something that somehow meets the protocols to end up in a library with apparent objects, they should have tools and be able to do that efficiently.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with candidate Hasby. Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?
Well, I think, I'm happy to say, I think we have strong protocols in place and safety measures in place. We have a very strong relationship with our local enforcement. We have crisis training in place and other tools that have been developed over the years. I'm certain it's an ongoing assessment, and I would look to the administration to continually assess, and I would be absolutely supportive of the resources needed to support, maintain, and enhance as necessary.
Thank you. Candidate Pryor?
I support what Jay Hasby said. The district should continue following the advice of local law enforcement to protect students from intruders. Our district has a great relationship with the Plymouth and Wayzata police departments. I know our in-school officers make a special effort to build caring relationships with students, which builds trust, creates a sense of belonging, and keeps students safe. We can also help by providing adequate mental health support and being vigilant when it comes to suicide warnings, threats of violence, and taking social media interactions seriously. We should train teachers, students, parents, and staff on how to recognize warning signs, and we should do what we can to prevent bullying. I'm concerned about national political rhetoric against LGBTQ youth and how it will impact students in our schools. We should be cognizant of the messages we send and be sure to make sure all students feel valued and safe regardless of religion, identity, political party, sexuality, or gender.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui. What actions would you support be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?
I think we can increase number of resources that are available to not only kids but also their parents. Like, child and teen gun safety classes can be offered. There can be extreme risk identification, both at home and at school. Guns in schools should be... There should be secure gun shortage, and publicly it should not be available, I feel. Stop arming people. If, I mean, it's available, and if they're watching it on TV, they are more likely to use it. Threat identification and assessment programs should be more available at even churches, schools, and other community, you know, places.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton?
Thank you. I was able to meet with Police Chief Eric Fadden in July and was very much reassured about the current state of safety in our schools. He has a great, ongoing relationship with our administration. I know that he was presenting at a school board work session the end of June, and I know that our school board was very concerned, of course, following recent events in schools. We've got great school resource officers in our high school and our middle schools as well now, full-time, and I know that the district has just rolled out a Crisis Go app for teachers and administrators, which will greatly streamline communication in crisis events. One thing I am slightly concerned about is the walkout protests that we had in our school district last year. There were a few of them, and students left the building, and then they re-entered the building. I think that creates a vulnerability that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with candidate Shelton first with this question. Mental health is a key issue of concern across the country and in our schools. How would you suggest our district address the mental health needs of our students?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that when it comes to mental health, we definitely have to have a partnership with families as well as the school. I believe that schools can... They do have the resources. We have resources always. We could use more resources, but as far as making students aware of the resources that are available to them, I know that we have partnerships, or I have in the past. I assume they persist with organizations outside the school that can offer counseling, and if need be, it free of charge. I think that it needs to be a proactive effort. I know that there's great awareness being created around mental health, because it's something that our kids are continuing to struggle with, and because of COVID, it's just gotten worse. But I think absolutely that we need to look at our social media usage, because that, especially in teen girls, is a huge indicator of mental health issues.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So I feel like we need to have more availability of psychologists and psychiatrists, resources available at school. We need to offer maybe short-term courses to deal with stressful situations, or if there is bullying, and any other age-appropriate resources should be available that kids are vulnerable to and they can affect their thinking or how they act. We need to offer better counseling opportunities age appropriately as well.
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think...
Your microphone.
Yeah, there's been a lot of emphasis, and I think there are a lot of existing protocols in place within the structure of the system. I think I would look again to the administration if there were emerging trends and concerns, and if that implied additional resource needs, we'd need to assess that and allocate resources accordingly.
Thank you. Candidate Pryor?
Yeah, I've been talking to counselors in the school and attending forums about this issue. I know this is something our district values and tries really hard to provide. Ultimately, we need more mental health staff and therapist partners in our schools. The need for mental health, you know, support is much greater since COVID, and right now, we have, you know, only a few professionals for thousands of students. Something people might not realize is that school counselors don't generally have mental health training, and this is an area where we could provide some professional development and to get more mental health providers in the schools. Something else to do that we could do now without much extra financing is just keeping the lines of communication open and training teachers and staff and parents and students to look for warning signs, to know who to contact, what's available, and make sure that people responsible are...
Ladies, please stay a little further from the mic. Okay. Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with candidate Pryor, and actually, I'm going to ask the timers to do 90 seconds on this one. Let me know when you're ready. All right. Candidate Pryor. The equity commitment adopted by the board April 12, 2021 states systemic racism and many inequities exist in our society. How do you see the Wayzata School District working to fulfill its mission and act on its core values of achievement, collaboration, equity, integrity, and respect? Please be specific.
Sorry, what's the actual question there?
How do you see the Wayzata School District working to fulfill its mission and act on its core values of achievement, collaboration, equity, integrity, and respect? Please be specific.
Well, the fact that the equity commitment is there at all is a positive step. It's an extension of the each-and-every commitment that the district has made. I know that they're making some progress. We still have an achievement gap, and, you know, I support a lot of everything they're doing so far to give a sense of belonging to students in the school, but until we fix our reading scores, we're not going to be able to close the achievement gap. We have no hope of closing the achievement gap, because ensuring all students read... I mean, if you can't read, you will struggle with everything else in school. Our 80% proficiency scores overlook... Our 80% reading proficiency scores overlook the fact that many parents in our district rely on private tutors to bring their students up to grade-level reading, but not all... up to grade-level reading, but not all families can afford that, and that is the main reason for why Wayzata's achievement gap. How many students are we graduating that cannot read proficiently based on our reading scores broken down by demographics? Probably quite a few. 95% of kids can learn to read according to the NIH, even those with learning disabilities. We should be focusing on reading as our top priority."
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Yeah, thank you. There are, I think inherent in our mission and vision, equity is really embedded in it, and I know that the Board's very good intent in 2021 was to amplify and clarify that. I think of our district as setting the table every day with really good stuff, and I think, I know I had three kids, it's been a while since they've been through the system, but the ability at a very young age for their instructors to discern areas of strength and areas of weakness was profound, and our experiences were very, you know, each and every and captured that uniqueness. So I, we're in the constant pursuit of excellence and relentless pursuit of improving each and every kid's results, and I'm confident that that pursuit won't quit, and I'm certainly supportive of it. It's inherent in our mission.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton. Would you like me to reread the question?
Yes, please.
"How do you see the Wayzata, I'll start at the beginning. 'The equity commitment adopted by the Board April 12, 2021 states systemic racism and many inequities exist in our society. How do you see the Wayzata School District working to fulfill its mission and act on its core values of achievement, collaboration, equity, integrity, and respect? Please be specific.'"
First of all, I do well remember when we adopted the equity commitment. Equity is one of those words that sounds really great, and our district defines it as meeting the individual needs of each and every student, and I like that. I support that because, you know, it is important to realize that we do start off in different places. However, equity also guarantees, in a way, equal outcomes, and for anyone who has more than one child, where you can control for genetics and you can control for home environment, would never make the assumption that those children are going to come out in the same place academically. So I do want to be careful with our pursuit of equity, that it doesn't lead to reduced standards. I know in other parts of the country such as Oregon, they've removed math and reading requirements for graduation to increase racial equity, and I think that short-changes all of our students. In some parts of this state, they've actually taken away the power of a zero to increase grades. So also, they're getting rid of gifted and talented programs. I just want to be sure that in our pursuit of equity, we don't lower our standards because we have a lot of high-achieving students and they deserve the best.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So I feel like we are meeting individual needs when we talk about equity. We have a huge population from Indians to Somalis to Latinos and so many, I mean, they all have equal opportunities available. I mean, me being a woman, being an immigrant and a Muslim, I'm able to, you know, talk for the common good of all the kids, so I'm actually very happy. My daughter graduated from the school and she was also very happy. I mean, there are, there may be opportunity gaps, you know, we can offer more by offering to, making it more, you know, available to the parents in case the kids can miss out opportunity, you know, talking about opportunity gaps. And then we can hold families accountable for the child's attendance and, you know, provide summer learning programs to address that. Talking about equity gap, it may be, you know, there may be disparities in educational outcomes, you know, student success metrics across race, ethnicity, but I think that's more on individual basis. I think it is available to students as a whole, so.
Thank you. We're going to start with the next question with candidate Siddiqui. Let's go back to one minute for the timers. Thank you. "What do you think is the biggest challenge to learning that our students face and how would you propose to address this?"
I think when we look at the reading scores, I was looking at the graph, some schools' kids have better reading scores as compared to others, so we can maybe try to introduce more engaging programs for kids so their reading abilities and math abilities are, can be brought higher up to compete with the schools that are making way better progress. So that's my most important point, I think, on this.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton.
Would you repeat the question, please?
"What do you think is the biggest challenge to learning that our students face and how would you propose to address this?"
Thank you. I think Sheila pointed out, and as well as Miriam, kids who can't read, that is, especially, you know, after fourth grade when you stop learning to read and start reading to learn, that's, you know, should be the number-one focus at a young age, and I do think that if we really kind of analyze how we're teaching kids to learn and even maybe go back to the basics of phonics, we can capture more kids first time and have less recovery later. But as far as reading goes, you know, if you can't read, even your mental health will suffer, so I believe that we should spend a lot of resources and energy on making sure those young kids learn to read.
Thank you. Candidate Prior.
Yeah, I'm going to go with reading as well as the biggest challenge. This topic is near and dear to my heart. When students struggle in reading, it affects their math scores, it affects everything, and it's not about intelligence or hard work. Being read to by your parents and having books in your house can teach kids vocabulary and a love of reading, but it cannot teach kids to read. It takes well-trained teachers using evidence-based practices. Wayzata inconsistently follows best practices when it comes to reading instruction, and they don't always provide the intensive instruction our dyslexic students need to learn. Our 80% proficiency scores, again, they overlook the fact that many of the parents in our district pay for private tutoring to bring their kids up to grade-level reading. One of the best things we can do is to focus on science of reading methods, things like letters training. Many states are already on board with this, North Carolina, Florida, Mississippi. Mississippi had the highest gains in reading achievement after going, after following the science.
Candidate Hasby.
Sure, if you don't mind, please repeat the question.
Sure. "What do you think is the biggest challenge to learning that our students face, and how would you propose to address this?"
Yeah, oh my. I think it's, my youngest kid graduated seven years ago, and I thought in his case, one of his biggest challenges to learning was he was distracted with his mobile phone and his social life, and, you know, shame on mom and dad, you know, we probably could have tightened it a little bit. He turned out to be a great kid and is off to a good career. I, you know, finding the balance on using all of the tools that we have and using, I know we do harness those resources to help learning, but finding the right balance there, it would be a key.
Thank you. We're going to start the next question with candidate Hasby. "This past legislative session ended without action on educational funding. What message would you bring, would you give to your legislators regarding legislation to address the needs of our schools?"
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, in my current role, did send a couple of notes to our legislators, and they were thoughtful and listened intently, but yes, it was a disappointing outcome. I think that there's a lot of evidence and data that supports the funding formula not keeping pace with inflation and in an environment that we're seeing raging inflation, that's disheartening. So I would again signal the criticality of the funding formula being addressed to public education, which would not only impact us but the rest of the public districts across the state.
Thank you. Candidate Prior.
I would echo what Jay Hasby says. The funding formula needs to keep pace with inflation. The legislators need to fund the unfunded mandates so that we no longer have to rely on cross-subsidies to fund these things. And I would encourage, you know, more funding for letters training for teachers. That's something that teaches teachers how to teach phonemic awareness and have better, you know, reading instruction for our earliest readers, and that has bipartisan support at the legislature. There's the will there, they just need to pass the funding bill, send us the money.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So we want to strive to provide funding according to the student need. We want to provide more funding to districts with low property wealth, ensure that dollars are used well to improve student learning experiences and outcomes, and then be transparent about the systems design and monitor funding going to district, and then share clear and transparent data on the amount of funding and schools, that schools actually get.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton.
Thank you. I do echo what Jay and Sheila brought up about, well, especially the unfunded mandates. If that's something that they're supposed to be covering anyway, then it makes sense that they would do that. However, we don't unfortunately have a lot of control of what goes on in the legislature. What we do control is our budget here at home, and I know that we have seen budget cuts in the last year. We've seen our enrollment decline, and I know that it's coming back, but it's not to pre-COVID levels yet, so I think that we have to address the concerns of the parents who are withdrawing their parent, withdrawing their children from school, because when we have increased enrollment, our funding goes up, and those are the things that we can control, so I think we need to focus on that as well.
Thank you. For the next question, we're going to start with candidate Prior. "Wayzata middle school and high school students can purchase à la carte food choices at lunch, which include ice cream, cookies, Rice Krispie treats, chips, and sugary drinks. These foods comprise 40% to 55% of food purchased at these schools. Some neighboring school districts such as the Minneapolis schools do not have an à la carte and instead offer an unlimited salad bar of vegetables and fruits for students to select from. Please share what you would do to move Wayzata toward the healthier lunch model and how you would address potential complaints by students and parents if the district were to remove the à la carte menu?"
First of all, I love the idea of a salad bar as a way of giving kids as much as they want to eat. It should be feasible in our district. Having a model in Minneapolis to follow would help us understand how much it will cost and what are the practical implications. As for à la carte, we should at least be replacing the snacks with healthier options, yogurt and cheese instead of ice cream, whole-grain muffins, items and drinks with less sugar and concerning ingredients. As for what parents will say, other than making reasoned arguments, I can't do much about people resisting, but I do expect a lot of support for the healthier options. The Wayzata Healthy Habits and Food Group has over 1,000 members. They have been trying to improve school lunches for years. There are a lot of great ideas out there, and I hope the district Wellness Committee will be reinstated soon so the district can hear the concerns of our community."
Thank you. Candidate Shelton.
Thank you. Please repeat the question.
I'm going to read just the question part. "Please share what you would do to move Wayzata toward the healthier lunch model and how you would address potential complaints by students and parents if the district were to remove the à la carte menu?"
Well, this is a hard one. I think that it's important to have the à la carte. I don't necessarily think that we need to offer all of the unhealthy options that we currently do. I know that for my son, given the choice, he's definitely going to choose the less healthy option regardless what I have to say about that. So I would agree with Sheila that we do need to offer à la carte but make the options more healthy. I mean, I think there's some delicious foods that we can offer like the cheeses and like muffins, yogurt, granola, granola bars, even, you know, a healthier chip option. I do expect there would be pushback from kids, but I think just given a little bit of time and realizing that the options are still good would bring those to a close. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
So I feel like we, if we so decide we want to remove à la carte from the menu, if we want to have salads, then all schools should have the same, not that one school is having à la carte and some other schools are having salad. That's kind of not fair. And then if, and then there are kids I see all the time, parents complaining, "Oh, my kids hardly reach and get the tray and the time is up," so maybe we need to organize more snack times for kids with nutritional deficiencies, so, because some of the kids, for them, this is the only meal they really eat, and they just get home and eat junk food. So we should try to get all the nutritious foods available for the kids.
Thank you. Candidate Hasby.
Sure, thanks. I mean, I wouldn't, for me, this isn't really a hot item. I don't mean to be insensitive or callous, but it just wouldn't be, but I, I mean, I guess I like the notion of having an à la carte option, certainly with input from concerned parents and our able staff with nutritional subject matter expertise, you know, we can certainly find the right compromise.
Thank you. We'll start with candidate Siddiqui first. "Our students observe various cultural and religious holidays. What are your thoughts on developing an inclusive school calendar that takes these holidays into consideration, such as when setting standardized testing dates and school events?"
Of course, I totally agree. You know, there is human dignity, equality, and opportunity that should always be the core principle upon which we establish, you know, justice in our society and in schools especially, beyond any race, ethnicity. We have huge, you know, Hindu population, Jewish, Muslims, so I think it's a great idea to have it all on the calendar so they can attend to their religious, you know, religious holidays and the exams are scheduled, so it's not a conflict for any of the minorities.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton.
Thank you. I do think that the diversity of our families is one of our greatest strengths, and I am absolutely supportive of honoring different cultures' holidays and especially something as easy as planning standardized tests. I definitely think that we can make sure we're taking that into account. As far as putting them on the calendar, I think that's a little bit trickier because we are mandated a certain number of days of attendance in schools, and right now I think our policy is that we don't have any religious holidays as days off on the calendar. So I think that's probably the way to carry on, but there's other ways to honor holidays without giving a day off. Now, obviously, students should never be penalized, especially with, you know, coming up, we're coming into Yom Kippur and our Jewish students are probably not going to be in school that day, and I don't think they need to be held accountable, and I think that.
Thank you.
That they should be excused for those absences.
Candidate Hasby.
Yes, this was a recent work session topic, and I think it is, as I think candidate Shelton alluded to, there's difficulty getting all the days in the calendar. I think as a practical matter, in, I don't exactly know how to execute this, but the notion of being sensitive to a particular class's makeup and the particular religious observance that would be important to that particular class and scheduling testing around that, I think, I think that sounds like a workable solution.
Thank you. Candidate Prior. Candidate Pryor.
Yeah, I would like to see our calendar better represent the different cultures in our community. We should allow members of the community to submit, you know, what they would like to see added, what would mean a lot to them to accommodate their cultures and beliefs. I am privileged in that the holidays I celebrate happen to fall on winter break and spring break and other things that are already incorporated into our calendar. And I think we could do some creative, you know, finagling with our holidays to, again, be better representative of our community.
Thank you. This is going to be our final question. With the budget, oh, and we're going to start with candidate Pryor. With a budget deficit intertwined with a national teacher shortage, how would you ensure Wayzata retains the highest quality of teachers?
So teacher goals and school district goals are mutually beneficial. And we, you know, understanding that and providing competitive pay, working with teachers to do professional development, and also trusting teachers and ensuring that they have the leeway within classrooms to discuss difficult topics and not be scared that they might accidentally acknowledge that, you know, not everyone fits into the male, female, gender dichotomy. That's the last thing we need to do. They shouldn't need to be worried about that. They, I trust their professional judgment to talk about things in age-appropriate ways. I trust them wholeheartedly with, you know, again, their training and their expertise. And I think just making a welcoming, you know, environment for them and, again, make, giving them the professional development they need is going to be necessary for
Thank you.
Keeping teachers.
Candidate Hesby.
Yes, our community is blessed with strong engagement and support from parents, students, and others, many others. We, I, we have exemplary leadership in our superintendent and his team, and, and I think all of that contributes to an extraordinary learning environment, which is attractive to teachers. And, and as candidate Shelton mentioned, yes, we need to be competitive in, in how, how teachers are compensated.
Thank you. Candidate Shelton.
Thank you. We've got an excellent reputation here, so that gives us already sort of a head start in, in getting great teachers, and we do have great teachers. The budget, you know, does represent a challenge. I did see some data from the National Center for Educational Statistics, and it looked at expenses in administration and different, different employees within the school system over the last twenty years. And it, we saw administration, and this is nationwide, not Wayzata, we saw administrator expenses increase eighty-eight percent over twenty years. Vice principals and principals, it was about a thirty-three percent increase, whereas teachers and student expenditures, only an eight percent. So we definitely don't want to, to lower our teacher pay in any way. I think that we're going to have to find those budget cuts elsewhere.
Candidate Siddiqui.
I think I consider myself a fiscally conservative individual, so we need to focus on balancing the budget. And then if we are doing any allocations and cuts, they should be based on achieving fiscal balance. We need to set short-term and long-term goals and prioritize mission-critical vision. The one thing I say is that, you know, a thorough analysis of the impact of, right now, because of the pandemic, or, you know, whatever situation is happening, that we want to cut out the budget. So we need to reprioritize budget allocations.
Thank you. I will now call on you for your two-minute closing statement, and we're going to start first with candidate Shelton.
Thank you. I want to again thank the League of Women Voters and all the volunteers that made tonight's forum possible. My father was in the military, but I was able to spend most of my years of education in rural southwest Louisiana. I earned a Bachelor's of Science from Louisiana State University and went on to earn my Doctorate of Pharmacy at Xavier University of Louisiana in New Orleans. Since then, my family's had the incredible experience of living abroad in three different countries. We lived in China, Netherlands, and Russia. And while abroad, I was able to see how much people of different ethnicities and backgrounds are alike, so much more than they are different. Our mother tongues and skin tones may have differed, but generally, our desires for our children and the value we place on education was very much the same. Each of your children is a unique individual with intrinsic worth that goes well beyond skin color or gender. Let's not focus them, let's not teach them to focus on their differences. There are certainly things we as a community disagree about, but we must come together on an abundance of common ground to keep academics our first priority, to support our amazing teachers, and to place a high value on parental and community input. On November eighth or before, I ask for your vote to keep Wayzata Schools academically focused and its tradition of excellence strong. Until then, you can find me on Facebook at Dr. Erin Shelton for School Board, or my website, sheltonforschoolboard.com, or you can email me at sheltonforschoolboard@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Siddiqui.
As an active citizen of Plymouth, Minnesota, I had my fair share of opportunities for activism. As a mother and as a working parent, I understand the importance of passing the baton to our future generation on an even plain field. The role of public school system in achieving this is of paramount importance and requires a vision of the horizon and beyond. My husband and I were raising two daughters, and the youngest of which is not with us anymore. We lost her to a very deadly childhood cancer. Our young family has experienced firsthand healthcare system, the need and meaning for special education, and strength rooted in our communities. I understand the meaning of active citizenship through service, and I believe I'm ready to serve our community in the capacity to an aspect of the society that matters the most, shaping better future of our coming generation. And I'm grateful to you for this opportunity and ask for your vote and support for the Wayzata School Board election.
Thank you. Candidate Hesby.
I'd like to thank the other candidates and voters present tonight and those watching remotely. I mentioned earlier on Touchdown that my district connections run deep, and I also alluded to the fact that all my kids attended Wayzata High School. I have a grandson who will attend Meadow Ridge in 2027, if his family resides where it does today. And I previously served on, on the board. And I also mentioned I do have forty years plus of experience in, business experience in banking and finance. I'm very proud of our district and its significant assets, which include strong community engagement and support from, from parents, students, and others, exemplary leadership from our superintendent and his team, as I also mentioned earlier, and outstanding teachers. If reelected, I will first engage with colleagues, administrators, other district stakeholders, and state legislators to listen, learn, challenge, and advocate as appropriate. Second, I'll stay in the lane of governing, not managing, to help our outstanding administrative team succeed. Third, I'll uphold the nonpartisan nature of the office by prioritizing our mission, vision, and vision above political or special interests. And fourth, I will constantly focus on perpetuating Wayzata Public Schools' mission and vision to build on our aforementioned assets so we can move forward together. As mentioned earlier, I'm willing to serve and lead for the remaining term of the vacated seat to provide continuity for my board colleagues and the district administration as Wayzata Public Schools returns to a greater sense of normalcy and moves ahead into a new era of excellence. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for tonight's session.
Thank you. Candidate Pryor.
Yes, thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting these forums. And thank you, Jay and Erin and Mariam, for being willing to serve and putting yourselves out there. And thank you to the audience for taking time out of your busy day to attend or watch online. As we look ahead, many of the decisions the board will make in the near future will have lasting impacts on our district. Even as a governing board, there is opportunity as a board member to advocate and provide evidence and support of a particular policy or goal. I think it's healthy for board members to ask questions and raise concerns. When I'm voting as a school board member, I will prioritize equity and academic rigor, mental health support, and improved nutrition, environmental sustainability in our new and existing construction, and most importantly, I will prioritize ensuring all our students, including those with learning differences, can read at grade level. I support these goals because I believe they are necessary for the current and future success of our students. If these issues are important to you as well, and I know to many of you they are, please vote for me in this year's election.
Thank you. Before concluding this Wayzata School Board Candidate Forum, I want to thank those that have made this forum possible. First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for be, for being willing to serve our community. Audience, please join me in thanking the candidate with our applause. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the Wayzata School District staff and the city of Plymouth for supporting this event. And finally, we wish to acknowledge and thank CCX Media for broadcasting live, livestream, and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at l w v w p a dot org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote four one one dot org. The League of Women Voters' award-winning one-stop shop, where candidates can register to vote, find their vote polling place, and learn how candidates stand on issues. Please vote in the November eighth, eighth election by absentee ballot or in person. Early, early in-person voting is already underway. Remember, your voice, or your vote is your voice. League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both women and men, at l w v w p a dot org. Thank you and good night.